Is that why James didn't participate? That's okay?
Fortunately, what I've told you on all your deaths out there is no longer relevant.
Okay, we're recording this.
Okay, well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to this special council meeting for Paris City Council. I ask you to please stand for the council president.
Almighty God, we humbly receive the seat of our safe life blessing upon this council. Direct and prosperous celebrations to the advancement of our glory and the true welfare of the people of the city of Paris. Amen. I acknowledge Tasmania, our original community, as the traditional custodians of the land that we're meeting on tonight, and by respects to all who have passed in prison. Thank you.
So we are currently recording this meeting and it will appear on the council's website later this week, I expect. This special meeting has been convened and there is only one item on the agenda. So that we can deal with the legal advice from senior council, but the Paris City Council is at a significant legal and financial risk and time is of the essence. Are there any declarations of interest of Alderman or close association? Okay, given the nature of the agenda, I will invite a motion to go into closed session and absolve the majority as required for this decision.
On the next.
Thank you, Alderman Van Beter, second law of Newington, bank procedural, there's no debate on. All those in favour? Against? Six all, the motion is lost, so we remain in open council.
Mr Mayor, I'll just agree with the officer's recommendation with an amendment to the bill.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that, please? Alderman Newington, thank you.
That's my point of order. Could that officer's recommendation? I should stand. Mr Mayor, the officer's recommendation, please just give me it.
That's all A to F. That's quite lengthy. It's okay.
They're in line. Now we're an open council, the public don't know what that recommendation is. For that purpose, it ought to be on the record.
Are you able to put that on the screen there for people to see rather than read it aloud? It's quite lengthy.
Won't include the addition to F, though?
No. I can confirm it is identical to the motion that was put on the 12th of October with the exception of recommendation F, if that helps. Yeah, if you could just read out F. Sorry. Look, the public has plenty of access to the report that previously went out with A to E on it.
With respect, sorry, Mr Mayor.
Look, I'm ruling it out of order. I'm not going to require that the whole motion be read out in detail. Thank you.
Well, the public don't know.
Look, the public have a debatable on a previously released report. Alderman, evidence.
Yeah, so is this meeting being livestreamed now?
Not livestreamed, it's being recorded for the council website.
And what's the reasons why it's not being livestreamed?
Because we haven't got the technology running.
Well, with livestream meetings over Teams before, the only issue with having people remotely is because we're in the chamber.
The fact of the matter is it's not being livestreamed.
So we perfectly have the capability to livestream, it's just choosing not to.
We don't have the ability to livestream from this room. And if we are in the chamber, then Alderman Walker can't participate in the same way.
So when we livestream meetings via Teams on YouTube, we would never use this room, is that right?
That's right.
So we have no capability to livestream a meeting via Teams if it involves this room?
Yeah, the answer is no, we're not live streaming and we don't have the capacity to switch to live streaming at this time.
Because we didn't foresee this coming.
Yes, that's exactly right, Mr Mayor.
Look, it's beside the point. And to answer the question, it's not being livestreamed, it will be a debatable later. On the website.
But can I say that point F, the new F, is an addition to that which is not on the public record anywhere? And all is in recognition.
I'd agree, and I have asked for it to be read, it's just we've been overtaken by events. If we could please read recommendation F, please, General Manager.
Thank you, man. Recommendation F, as amended, reads as follows. Authorizes the mayor and general manager to communicate this decision publicly following provision of advice to Shambrood Australia.
Alderman Van Beter.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, very recently, council received a high-level external legal opinion, which was requested by council as to the possible legal consequences of a challenge by Shambrood Overseas Investments Australia, where if council fails to grant the two-year extension request by the company of substantial commencement under the.
Just hold for a moment, please. Brendan.
My apologies.
Okay. Alderman Van Beter.
Where would you like me to start?
Where would you like to start?
I'd like to start from the beginning.
Okay, let's start from the top again.
Thank you. Mr Mayor, very recently, council received a high-level external legal opinion, which was requested by council as to the possible legal consequences of a challenge by Shambrood Overseas Investments Australia, where council fails to grant the two-year extension requested by the company of substantial commencement under the sale and development agreement contract entered into by the parties on the 25th of May, 2017. This advice was marked as confidential, most likely due to the fact that it could be detrimental to council in any subsequent legal proceedings if its details are made public. So without going into the details of the advice, it's clear to me that this most recent advice reiterates and strengthens the previous internal advice we've received from the general manager and relevant legal officers, and also previous external legal advice other than this most recent advice. The situation is that council is currently in breach of the sale and development agreement contract. And unless this situation is remedied by granting the requested extension tonight, council is likely to be liable for substantial damages and costs that will need to be paid for either by the reserves that we have or by an increase in rates. The recommendation that has been put forward by the officers tonight is exactly the same recommendation as was put forward by the officers on the 12th of October, 2020. Apart from part F, which now is detailed as authorizes the mayor and general manager to communicate this decision following provision of advice to Shambrood. As the Alderman would remember, the recommendation is detailed. It actually goes through the components of the sale and development agreement as related to the extensions. However, it also provides some safeguard conditions which were developed by all the Aldermen around the table tonight. Those safeguard conditions are detailed in part CC of the recommendation. And they are to give us comfort in relation to the completion of the project. So the important aspects that need to be kept in mind tonight are that an extension is the right and proper thing for us to do from a legal perspective and a financial perspective and from a responsibility as far as entering into a contract in good faith. I strongly urge all of the Aldermen to support this motion.
Thank you. Alderman Urican?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, obviously, the points put forward by Alderman Van Beter there are quite clear. I mean, this comes down to a pretty basic legal and liability issue to the council. Now, unfortunately, we've got ourselves into this position. We had a deadlock at the last meeting, but I think it's quite clear to all of us now that we can't continue to have that breach of contract hanging over our head and leave our rate place at significant risk of having to foot the bill. It's a bit disappointing that some of the community discussion about this issue hasn't been as full and frank. And I think there's a bit of misinformation out there in the media about buyback clauses and whether that can or can't happen. But it's quite clear to all of us in this room that that was really not the issue that should have been discussed at the time. And certainly, the issue in relation to whether the hotel should ever be built or not is not something that we really need to be discussing at this point either. You know, Shambrood have done everything they possibly can to get this project up off the ground. It's quite clear to all of us, they've quite clearly shown that they've made every possible effort to make it all happen. You know, if it wasn't for the pandemic and the impact that's had on UTAS and TAFE, you know, we could have quite well been in a position where the hotel would have been well and truly started and maybe even close to finishing. You know, I mean, the legal advice that we've received, you know, it's quite clear once again that, you know, if we don't extend the buyback, sorry, the commencement date on this contract, you know, we're going to leave ourselves wide open. And the other thing that concerns me is that, you know, we've been trying to get some of these, this project in particular and a few other major projects going for quite a few years now. And the reputational damage that we potentially leave the council open to by, you know, whatever word you want to use, whether it's dilly-dally or, you know, having a confused message out there in the community to these larger developers, I think is a major risk that we should really be careful of making sure we don't let that continue. You know, I mean, the merits, you know, I'm on the public record of saying that I firmly believe the hotel will be a great asset for the city and will go a long way in terms of the job situation and certainly increase the amenity of the Kangaroo Bay area and provide a really great dining and hospitality venue for the whole city. Bottom line with this one is that we simply can't afford not to, you know, extend the buyback agreement, sorry, the commencement date. And I think it's the right thing to do, like I said, in relation to, you know, the contract's quite clear. You know, these factors that have prevented them from starting have been quite well and truly outside of control of Shambrood. Hopefully now, I mean, one thing that I do hope happens here is that, you know, the misinformation that I believe has been out there in the community about, you know, claims of secrecy by council or, you know, some of the ridiculous songs that were out in front there about greedy developers and deals with, you know, council doing anything untoward. I think that hopefully is the end of all of this. We get a successful vote tonight because, you know, people have a right to object to things out there in the community and I would never, you know, say that that shouldn't be allowed to happen. But accurate and true reflection of the true situation is something that I hope we can put to bed from tonight onwards and make the community clearly aware of the issues that we've been facing over the last couple of meetings. So bottom line is, it's the right thing to do, it'll be a great project for the city. And, you know, the implications of us not, you know, endorsing this recommendation from the staff, you know, is too great for us to even consider. And I'd like to also take the opportunity to say that, you know, some of the allegations have been levelled at the staff over this and the way that they've handled the whole situation has been deeply disturbing to me. And I'd like to think that we can now move forward and accept that these people are here doing their job, making, you know, valid recommendations, using all the best information available. And hopefully, like I said, we can move forward and put this to bed and, you know, hopefully get this project, you know, closer to what actually happened.
Other speakers? Alderman Muller?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. In this debate, I will be referencing the published officer's report for the October 12 meeting. I do not believe it is appropriate to be discussing, even if we're an open council, the content intended and anything else of any material that has currently got a confidential classification. The advertised purpose of this meeting is to consider a legal matter. The officer's report that you have before us says the council was presented with, says it is to grant a further extension time to Shambrood, et cetera, et cetera. At paragraph 223 of the officer's report, council was presented with three options. Exercise the buyback clause, negotiate a commercial buyback, or grant an extension. Following the rejection of the recommended extension option, council could then, council could have opted to execute a buyback clause. At paragraph 224, the officers advised that the buyback option is legally robust, although risky. As such, it was inappropriate to move immediately to buyback without giving Shambrood an opportunity to test the rejection of their extension requests in the courts. So following the refusal, I attempted to foreshadow a motion to exercise the buyback option in the new year. It is a matter of public record that the mayor dissuaded me from that course of action, but the record will also show that my intention was communicated. If, as expected, the buyback didn't receive majority support in the new year, the responsible thing, and I've always maintained this, would be to revert to the recommended option, that is, extend. The objective of all alarms has been to either buy back the land or at least keep that option open. Since then, I have come to realise that due to the intricacies of the secret legal contract and despite the officer's report, buyback is not a legally robust option. As a consequence of being misadvised on October the 12th, a decision needs to be made and I would have hoped to receive that advice in an officer's report, but that is not the case. In any event, it is clear to me that the extension must be granted as the only way of keeping the buyback clause in play for what I consider to be this doomed project. The alternative is allowing a clear title to slip into Shambrood's hands. Once they have that title, they may do what they will and we can look forward to a block of flats which, as we have discovered next door, is probably the only commercially viable project for this area of once-public prime waterfront land. We have no choice, we must extend. As to having this discussed in a closed meeting, which we're not now, the officer's report, now marked confidential, is identical to the public document of October the 12th. It includes advice at 3.1 that the matter has been included in open council in order for the issues and reasons underpinning council's decisions to be transparently communicated. And this is on a page stamped confidential. Go figure. We have no choice, we must extend.
Okay, just before, I'll hand over the chair to Alderman Chong. I think there needs to be a correction there. The recommendation that you're talking about, paragraph 2.24, in regard to option one, did in fact say that this arrangement is regarded as legally robust, provided the COVID epidemic did not exist. In other words, the report, as worded, is specific that because of course 6A of the agreement and the COVID pandemic, option one is highly risky. All right? Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As I mentioned earlier, the subject this night, this evening, is in fact to consider as to whether extend the commencement on the project to Shambrood until October 2022, amongst other points. The fact of the matter is that the information that's been circulated or which was circulated in the public place on the 12th of October was known to the public and it was in its entirety, has been sort of regurgitated in relation to this particular issue. On the question of the substantial commencement, on page, well, actually, it's 1.3, substantial commencement condition, Shambrood is required to commence construction of footings, foundations and other ground level and below-ground level infrastructure relating to buildings approved by the development permit within the timeframe set by the agreement. That hasn't happened. And they did lodge an application to council on the 14th of November, 2019. But interesting enough, the permit for actual building and the footings, which was part of the stage 1B, council officers sought information from Shambrood and that was not forthcoming. In other words, the building application, 1B, lapsed. In other words, substantial commencement of the project could have occurred back in relation to 2019. And it was extended beyond that because, and it's in the fine print, it was on the basis that there was, that the application or the building application was not forthcoming, nor was it approved and it lapsed. That is one reason I suggest why it could have started with substantial commencement and it didn't. Another extension was sought after that date and council agreed to it. So we have provided, this council has provided numerous extensions of time and all of this time, there hasn't been any clear indication that they are prepared to take it further. On the basis of whether unreasonably withheld consent to a written request to extend such a time, I think what we need to establish here is what is reasonable and what is not. And it would seem to me that they had every chance to be able to extend this project to start what we call substantial commencement. And I've got to make a comment here, that this is an agreement. It's an agreement, not a development application. And it's not under the terms and conditions of LUPA, Approvals Act of 1993. It stands alone as a contract and by the very nature of that contract, you can say that, and I would say it, that they are in breach of their contract because they have not substantially commenced the project, nor have they provided reasonable reasoning in relation to that. As I mentioned, the letter, in another matter, the letter from the CEO of UTAS and in that, there is that key aspect that they are putting forward as to why their partner, that service provider, has not in fact been able to work. That, I refer to some information that was sent out in the Mercury in March 17, 2020. In that, Mr Rufus Black quoted that there is, has very significantly impacted on the council, university enrolments and revenue. But in that article, the professor says that the extension or being able to continue with this has impacted upon their financial ability. And that was basically conveyed to the public well and truly before March 2019.
Thank you, Alderman James, your five minutes is up.
Thank you. I will not support this extension.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Piers?
Thank you, Mayor. There's something here which I said in the public meeting some time ago, but Shambrood have reclaimed land in Kangaroo Bay, we know that. But since that time, no further work has occurred. Now, this is what I said last time. I go down there now and it's a fence up, fence down. And I'll reiterate Alderman James's words here. Substantial commencement condition, Shambrood is required to commence construction, and this is what I annoys me a bit, construction of footings, foundations and other ground level and below-ground level infrastructure relating to build. So they may have done some work and reclaimed some of the pavement, nothing on top. There's no footings there that I can see, I can see no foundations there. But, you know, that's in the agreement, so, you know, I can't see what's happening there because nothing's happening. That's what's happening. Now, in this time of, as I've said before, two big businesses, Shambrood and a university, but the university has deferred their decision. Now, we understand why that's happening, but for how long? For how long? The uni said, yeah, commit it. But if there's no decision in two years, are we back to square one, which I think we will be? So, Mayor, I'm a bit like some other Aldermen, I was all for this now, but I just think we've been looked down by no commencement. Now, people say to me that you can't start building the school, you know, until like the hotel and then you can't build the school later because the hotel's there. Well, I would just say that I'd like to see some goodwill and something get started. Now, I think if the hotel was to start, and there's not only in Tasmania, like there's UTAS and ULI, but around the world, there's some other education people that could do this work. Because as I said, at first, it wasn't going to be the green plan of catering education that we've been told will be the cream of the cream. I mean, at first, it was just going to be a UTAS thing that was going to do some education facilities for training and that would be great in the hospitality area and that would be great. But, you know, it's certainly the level's gone up and so far, they haven't achieved a person to do that. So I'm a bit concerned, Mayor, that, you know, are we getting anywhere with this?
Thank you, other speakers. Alderman Walker, did I see movement there? No. All right, Roger, sorry, Doug. It's slow movement as I get back to working a mouse. We are in an interesting position and if I was starting a way through this, I wouldn't be starting from here. This is a contract matter. This is not a concept matter. And that is what it was in October. And that is what the report noted as the least risky way forward was to extend the contract. That is still the case. And I hope that everyone treats this matter with the gravity it deserves. It is not a culture war story about the concept. It is hard and vast contract matter and consequences, one way or the other, of how we decide to do or to move forward. And I make this point yet again, because I think there is a little bit of kabuki on this issue. If people were of a means to exercise a buyback right, council had that position or that option about a year ago when it decided to extend. If that was the will and the way forward, I would have expected an alternate motion to have been circulated. No such motion was circulated. Now, this is a story that seems to be an inconvenient fact, but it is real. Circumstance changed with COVID, clearly and ambiguously, and that is what your advice stated. The option was there a year ago, but not a single Alderman decided to exercise the right to put together an alternate motion on this. So we deal with what we have before us, a contract matter, not a concept matter. And I urge everybody to view that, to take the advice that was provided around what the least riskiest way forward is and to truly understand that to do otherwise or to vote otherwise is your right. But you are endorsing the consequences of what would be likely to follow from that. Often, we are in a situation with lots of decisions where there aren't easy ways forward. But the choices are limited in this and I urge you to understand as you do and vote on that understanding. So it's a contract matter, let's extend the contract because this is the governance-prudent way forward for the residents in the rate place. It's a contract issue, not a concept issue. Thank you, Alderman Warren, then Alderman Englands.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We have before us legal advice which is confidential and so we can't make that public. But what I believe we can make public is the brief that was given to receive that legal advice. Because the advice that you receive is very much based on the brief that you are given. And I'm concerned to read that the advice was based on being instructed that the primary reason that informed decision-making by the Aldermen opposed to the grant of a further extension is opposition from a sector of the community to the development. Now, I find that quite insulting. It suggests that I and my colleagues who voted against the extension did not understand. It suggests that I and my colleagues who voted against the extension did not understand the legal issue. What we questioned was not that we wanted to buy it back, but that we were unclear as to whether we could unreasonably withhold consent. So, I mean, what we're discussing tonight is to whether we unreasonably withheld consent. And I don't believe that we did because we had concerns about the project and its progress long before March 2020. There seems to be some deep sighing going on and some muttering going on.
Alderman Piers, hold up.
Thank you. The extension that we gave was in November, 11th of November 2019. In March, mid-March, end of March, COVID hit and became an issue. I would argue that probably two or three weeks after that in April, then it became clear that it was going to not go away very quickly. Now, that gives Shambrood from November to March to make the progress that they requested the extension, the reason they requested the extension, which was to work with their partner, UTAS, to redesign the building. Now, UTAS was on board, Shambrood was on board. All they had to do was redesign a building which they already had plans for. It was designed for Test tape. We understood.
Oh, look, Mr. Mayor, look, that's.
Look, please ask all Aldermen to respect every other Alderman's contribution to this debate.
I'll continue. I'll continue. We understood that a different type of building was required for a different type of educational institution. Now, I have no comfort, and I also read that the people who gave us the legal advice were assured by our GM that things were on track. Now, I have no such comfort because I have not even seen a draft, a first draft of that design. Now, from November to March, there should have been substantial process on that design. Even after March, architects were working from home. They were not impacted by the pandemic in the same way that some industries were. They could easily have continued to work, and yet we have nothing before us. Now, it's possible that there is something, but that hasn't been shared with us. But that has led to me feeling that Shambrood did not make progress in that four, five-month period. And therefore, I don't think it is unreasonable that we withheld consent. Now, that has yet to be tested in a court of law. And instead, we're arguing about buyback, which, as Alderman Mulder pointed out, was never the intention. The intention was, is this project going to progress? Do we still want to support it? Do we think it's reasonable to give another extension, or do we cut our losses and say this project is not going anywhere, and we should, we should end it now? So, I, I think that a lot of the arguments given tonight have been on the wrong track. They have been talking about things that are not relevant, not even related to legal issues in some cases. It comes down to, did we unreasonably withhold consent? I don't believe we did, and therefore I believe that Shambrood is not in a position to argue force majeure because the project was off track before COVID hit.
Thank you. Alderman Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a bit of stuff prepared tonight on how we got here at such short notice. But considering the fact we're in an open meeting, I think I'll refrain from that. All I will say is that the information provided us, I don't consider to have been timely or complete. And like Alderman Warren, I am concerned that some of the advice given to others has not necessarily represented the will of the council. I think an example of that's already been referred to in the fact that we've got a copy and paste that talked about the fact this is actually an open meeting on a confidential piece of paper. Tonight, the proponents have a say over that. In around 20 months' time, those roles will be reversed. Tonight, we are advised, that word, that if we don't grant their wishes, the site's lost, and they can do whatever they like to it. We've been put in this position where it's the only vote that keeps the buyback alive. How did we end up here? Unfortunately, to not support, we are again advised, is to throw away any chance of controlling the destiny of that land. The hotel and training school is not happening. We all know it's not happening. I'll say again, this project was dead well before someone abat in Wuhan. And let me say also this, if the proponent cannot deliver what it promised, then someone else deserves the chance to deliver the alternative vision, not them, and not after this. So let us boldly venture forth to October 2022, when hopefully we can have this land returned to us so we can seek something and someone out that can and will enhance the site. It might be public, it might be private, it might be public-private. That's not the debate tonight. Tonight is simply about keeping that possibility alive.
Any other speakers? Alderman Blomme?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, whilst controversial, the matter before us is relatively, is relatively straightforward. That is, this is a contractual issue. It is not as some would have us believe, an opportunity, an opportunity to revisit the merits of the Kangaroo Bay Hotel Hospitality School. That was settled when the original contract with Shambrood was executed on the 25th of May 2017. So from my perspective, Mr. Mayor, as directors of this organisation, we have a clear fiduciary duty to make a decision that is truly in the best interests of Clarence City Council. Central to our consideration is the importance of minimising our level of risk. As defined in clause 6A, the contract provides for a time extension if all reasonable attempts have been made to comply. Also outlining the same clause, it is clear that council cannot unreasonably withhold consent to the request for an extension of time. Now, whilst it may be fair to say that some may have doubted Test tape's capacity to deliver world-class hospitality training, no one could possibly have foreseen the devastating impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. Plainly put, the unforeseen circumstances that had prevented Shambrood from fulfilling the contract are not in question. Force majeure is present, and in my view, incontestable. So in my view, this all turns on what, in all the circumstances, is the reasonable path forward. As directors of this organisation, it is incumbent on us to balance the risk of all available options. In the final analysis, agreeing to Shareboard Australia's two-year extension request with additional conditions that will ensure there is an appropriate process in place to see the development realised, along with privacy issues that did not previously exist, is a good outcome for Clarence and one that we should all warmly welcome. This outcome will provide a level of comfort to all Clarence residents, and Shambrood will make every best endeavour to deliver on their promise of an iconic development in our city that will deliver a truly unique and world-class educational and hospitality offering. After all, that is what our 2017 contract was all about. Mr. Mayor, I support the officer's recommendation and urge colleagues to do likewise. And, Mr. Mayor, that was my speech, word for word, that the general manager presented on my behalf at the 12 October meeting of this council. And over the past 10 weeks or 70 days, the only additional material relevant to this matter that has arisen is that council now has expert legal advice that without any doubt supports this position and clearly outlines council's contractual responsibilities and the real, very real and substantial financial and reputational risks that this council faces if we continue to be in breach of our obligations. Mr. McElwain's advice is unequivocal. There is no room for doubt as to what our obligations are.
My point of order, Mr. Mayor, that has been, that is confidential information, and it has been released in a public forum.
I'll ask the general manager for advice on this.
Sorry, I don't regard the naming of the legal advisor as a breach of the confidentiality, but any further discussion of it would be problematic.
So there is no room, Mr. Mayor, absolutely no room as to what our obligations are. And if we are to act in the best interest of this organisation and our ratepayers, then there should not be any room for any more conduct that is irresponsible or, Mr. Mayor, for some colleagues or for some, to seek to rewrite history. As there is no dispute, and nor is it disputation a reason for the factual matters set out in all the advice we have received on this matter, then we, as a council, are to act reasonably and in good faith, then it is appropriate, quite appropriate, for us to grant Shareboard Australia an extension of time for the achievement of substantial commencement to 13th October 2022.
Any other speakers? Write a reply, Alderman Blomme.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to reiterate some of the points that some of the Aldermen made. The first one is that many of the Aldermen noted that this is a contractual matter. It's not a matter as to whether or not council should have sold the land. It's not a matter of whether council should have granted the planning permit. It is a contractual matter. It is related to the sale and development agreement that was actually signed off by both parties on the 25th of May 2017. The other point that a number of Aldermen have made is that we have received various pieces of legal advice, both internal and external, from very capable and qualified legal practitioners. Three pieces of advice, not one, not two, but three. So that's another very important fact that Aldermen need to take into account. It's been highlighted by a number of the Aldermen that council needs to act in a reasonable, responsible manner, and to act in good faith. And from the advice that we have received, the most recent advice that we've received, we need to do that immediately. If we don't, then we are likely to suffer serious legal, financial and reputational consequences. I commend this motion to council.
So the motion is the officer's recommendation plus amended effort which authorised the Mayor and GM to convey decisions publicly once Shambrood has been advised. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried. Once again, that brings us to the pose of the last meeting for the year and taking this opportunity to hear advice.